Good evening, everyone. Let the February 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the Republic. A nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you all. Mayor Leslie, will you give us memorials?
Yes. Good evening. The deceased residence for the month of January 2021. Lazarus Kerfidus. That's the end. Thank you.
Mr. Willer, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Spooks.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Mr. Vasquez is absent.
Absent. Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Present.
Mr. Wiki.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Present.
Is Mrs. Boyle on?
Joan is on, yes.
Okay, Mrs. Boyle's checked and Mr. Willer. That's the end of roll.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ford does not appear to be present. That puts us into the first round of public discussion. Is there anyone for public discussion? Please unmute yourself. Public discussion going once, going twice. No one for public discussion? It's closed?
Really quickly, Mrs. Ford, I think is, they had Coburn's PTL meeting tonight, so I think that's why there was a conflict.
Okay, thank you. Chief Montella. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. We have the Brookhaven Fire Company's January 2021 fire report. We had two fire incidents in the borough, ten non-fire, twenty, twenty-nine calls for mutual aid, four drills for a total of forty-five for the month. We had no firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries, no loss on structure or contents in the borough. Our manpower was forty-five calls, average of fifteen firefighters. Five hundred ninety-five hours in service for the month. Four training sessions, average of twenty-six firefighters. Hundred and eighty-two personnel hours for the month. We had responded to the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires in the borough. Thirty-four, thirty-six Edgemont Avenue at the GNC store. We had a light fixture in the ceiling. Forty-nine, zero-one Chester Creek Road at Mack Hydraulics. We had a accidental welder's fire. We had an accident on Dutton Mill Road in Preston Avenue. And also a gas leak in the rear of five thousand seven-five Edgemont, which is the rear of the ShopRite. Assisted Upland Fire Company on two building fires, eight oh-one Upland Avenue and Crozier Hospital. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on two building fires, one at Parkside Terrace, the other at two forty. Avon Road and an accident at three fifty-two in Roland Road in Parkside. Assisted Aston Township Fire Department on two building fires. One on Mildred and Seaward Lane, the house fire, and the thirty-nine-hundred block of Mount Road. Assisted Garden City Fire Department on a building fire on seventeen Chestnut Parkway. Our monthly training was forcible entry. We had a dual training session with the Morton Rutledge Fire Company. They came down and did some training with us. Our COVID-19 reports were submitted to the council and mayor. We are experiencing just a steady transport of positive COVID patients. Brookhaven Fire Company Personnel, the status with our COVID-19 vaccination shots. We had sixty-two members offered the shots from Crozier Hospital for the COVID-19 vaccine. Fifty-four members received the first round of shots and we had twelve people already started the second round of the vaccine shots. Our storm totals for the snowstorm that just passed during that three-day event, we ran nineteen EMS calls and eleven fire calls. Our January EMS report for 2021, the ambulance answered a hundred and eighty-two calls for service. Transported a hundred and ten people to the hospital during the month. A hundred and twenty-four of those calls were dispatched as ALS emergencies, fifty-eight of them were dispatched as BLS emergencies. And the total for the month was a hundred and eighty-four. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chief Zebly with the police report, please.
Good evening, council. For January 2021. Brookhaven Police for assigned six hundred and forty-five assignments through DOTCOM. Of those, the more noteworthy ones are a robbery, which is under investigation. One sexual assault still being investigated with the assistance of CID County Detectives. One burglary, there was an arrest made on that one. Three assault incidents with three persons arrested. Fifteen theft incidents. Four retail, of those four were retail thefts, four were thefts from unlocked parked vehicles at night overnight, and two were actual thefts of vehicles. Two fraud reports, three criminal mischief, two harassment complaints, three terroristic threats, three narcotics. One DUI arrest, one public intoxication arrest, two disloyal persons, four mental health responses. Twenty-two suspicious conditions or persons or autos were investigated. Brookhaven Police responded to twenty-four domestic disputes or disturbances and resolved them. Responded eighteen alarms. We also responded to sixteen hazardous conditions or fire company calls. We took twenty-three vehicle accident reports in January and we assisted other departments thirty-one times. In total, twenty adults were arrested, eleven citations were issued or filed, and six warnings were issued. Total lost to victims amounts to approximately twenty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. And looks like recovered amounts is five thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. In January, there were no issues with officers and COVID. Or officers did begin receiving vaccinations and a stringent COVID mitigation plan and order remains in effect and will so indefinitely despite the vaccinations. One personnel issue was addressed in January. Also, we had a new officer get sworn in in January, part-time officer James Calso. He is in the FTO program. And also, we have upgraded portable radios from the county are ordered and we're just simply waiting delivery. These radios are no cost to us as a department. It was. It was the funding was found by the county to replace and upgrade all radios for every, every police department in the county. For training, Officer Wetton attended eighty hours of training with SWAT. Forty-eight hours for drone training and pilot license. Twenty-four hours for related to explosives breaching and eight hours team training. Also, Officer Tuttle in August each attended eight hours of patrol tactics training. Officer Duff, Tuttle, Subers, Calso, Martin, and myself received first aid and CPR training and recertification in January. Sensitivity training is being sought for officers and de-escalation training is being pushed back because of COVID and we're still waiting for that to get going. In total, approximately one hundred, one hundred and eight million hours of training were received by the officers. And we have the beanbag shells for the shotguns as we spoke before. The range does not open until February, so we're looking to get our guys trained in that. Lastly, Brookhaven Police will be. Brookhaven Police will be doing the trading card program. We're beginning the process of scheduling photographs and submitting biographies for production. With this, we will. Look to. Do prizes for juveniles if they collect all the cards of every officer. So we're working on that. It's in the works. And that concludes my report.
I have a George Pappas autographed nineteen ninety-three version, if anyone wants one. Hey, what, what, just one question. What is the drone certification or training until?
Well, it'll, they had an incident where they were really uneasy where they may have had a barricaded subject up in the attic. And someone had to volunteer and pop their head up there. Yeah, this will allow for the SWAT team members to fly drone inside and take it to awkward places where they can keep the officer safe.
So we're not asking for drones for SWAT?
Not yet. I'll ask for a drone later. For area checks and stuff.
I got, I got a little one I can say. Thank you, sir. Mr. Wills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report was forwarded to the mayor and borough council on Monday. And a copy is on file with the borough in case any members of the public wish to review it. Couple highlights of that report are as follows. Concerning the Zoor Street subdivision by the Arbor developers. The developer has recently submitted to the borough and executed a copy of the recorded and approved plan. And so I've begun the initial draft of the developers agreement and public improvement security agreement. And hope to get that to the developer within the next week or so. Secondly, on my list concerns forty-eight thirty and forty-eight thirty-two Greenwood Street. Again, this is basically a lot line relocation plan and a subdivision application. It was filed with the borough. Need in order for the lots to conform with zoning. This application is currently scheduled for review by the Borough Planning Commission at its meeting on February sixteenth. I will be in attendance and I suspect. A member of Mr. Catania's office will also be present for that Borough Planning Commission review. Thirdly, concerns the tax assessment appeals for 2021. We are technically monitoring a total of ten property tax assessment appeal cases filed with the borough. For 2021, the deadline to file had been January thirty-first. I have not received any additional. Tax assessment appeal cases since the workshop meeting, so I think we will be working with those ten cases for 2021. Finally, with regard to the 2021 increase in the bid limits. Which are the requirements for the purchase of certain borough products, equipment and services. Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry has announced the annually adjusted bid limits. For burrows based on the change in the Consumer Price Index. Beginning January first, 2021. The minimum purchase amount that requires advertisement for sealed bids. Will increase from twenty-one thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars. In addition, the minimum purchase amount required for telephone quotes. Will increase from eleven thousand three hundred dollars to eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And of course, borough purchases of less than eleven thousand five hundred hours. Require neither advertisement for sealed bids nor telephone quotes. I also have several action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening. And they are in the form of three different resolutions. First resolution is one recognizing and awarding Police Officer Benjamin Kyler. A permanent service-connected disability and an honorable discharge from police service. I will briefly review and read this resolution for the councils and also the public's. Review and attention. And it reads as follows, whereas Officer Benjamin Kyler has been employed as a full-time police officer by Brookhaven Borough. Since February sixth of 2012. Whereas on or about June sixth, 2019, Officer Benjamin Kyler was injured while performing police duties. And whereas various medical documents and reports. Indicate that Officer Benjamin Kyler can no longer perform the duties of a police officer. And whereas Brookhaven Borough believes that such injuries have resulted. In Officer Benjamin Kyler's total permanent service-related disability. Whereas Brookhaven Borough desires to grant Benjamin Kyler. An honorable discharge and to permanently fix Officer Kyler's status. As a recipient of a total permanent service-connected disability pension. Whereas Brookhaven Borough has entered into agreement between the borough and Delaware County Lodge Number twenty-seven. The Fraternal Order of Police recognizing Benjamin Kyler's permanent service-connected disability. Wherein the appropriate pension and certain medical benefits, life insurance and other retirement benefits will be established. Now therefore effective February twenty-eighth of 2021. Benjamin Kyler shall receive an honorable discharge. And again, a permanent service-connected disability pension with appropriate medical benefits, life insurance, other retirement benefits. If it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution, a motion would be in order at this time.
I'll entertain a motion. Who wants it?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And I think the record, obviously, we have an abundance of medical records and documents. On Officer Kyler indicating that his, in fact, injuries are permanent. And again, he has not been working as a full-time police officer now in excess of one year. He's been out, obviously, on. Medical leave as a result of these serious injuries. So I think. That resolution is clearly in order. Second resolution for Borough Council's consideration is the authorization of a partial escrow release. For the completion of certain public improvements by Franklin Brookhaven LLC. For the residents at Brookhaven Glen. Again, this is the fifty-five and over community that has just recently commenced construction. And the resolution reads as follows, whereas the Borough Brookhaven and Franklin Brookhaven LLC. Entered into a development agreement which provides effective security. For the completion of public improvements associated with the development project. Whereas Franklin Brookhaven LLC has established a revocable. Letter of credit with WSFS Bank. In the amount of one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents as completion. Or strike that as security for the completion of the public improvements. And by correspondence dated January twentieth, 2021. Franklin Brookhaven has requested a partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements. Whereas the borough engineer has reviewed the request for escrow release. Recommends an escrow release in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and four dollars and eighty-eight cents. So again, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution, a motion would be in order at this time.
What's the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
My third and final resolution for Borough Council's consideration this evening is the authorization of an application to the Delaware County Council. For liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. To be used toward the borough's 2021 road resurfacing program. As councilmen and the public may know, liquid fuel taxes are basically gasoline taxes. Imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on each gallon of gas that consumers pay at the pump. These gasoline taxes are then distributed by the Commonwealth to all the sixty-seven counties. Which in turn then distribute those to the various municipalities within their jurisdiction. It's basically a formula that counties utilize to distribute municipalities. Based on the number of roadways in that particular municipality.
I'm not gonna get them.
If it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution, again, basically authorizing. Application to Delaware County Council for liquid fuel funds in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. If it is the pleasure of Borough Council to adopt such a resolution, a motion would be in order at this time.
Who's taking the motion? Janice? Second, anyone?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple.
Excuse me one second. Sorry, Jay. Are we gonna, do we have to approve the lease for the?
State rep.
State rep?
We can do that as well, yes. As councilors are aware, we have had an ongoing existing lease. With State Representative Lee Ann Kruger. And prior to Representative Kruger's election to the district, we've had previous municipal leases with the state representative. There that provides obviously related services to our borough residents. So it's. Clearly a win-win both for the borough residents and the borough. And also for Representative Kruger to have immediate and ongoing access to the borough and the borough residents. So I have prepared. Basically a lease amendment that extends the lease for an additional two-year period, which would cover the years 2021 and 2022. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council to execute and authorize that lease extent. A motion would be in order at this time to do so.
I thought we already voted on this in the January meeting. We did not?
No. I looked in the minutes.
Was it brought up? It must, it must have been brought up for consideration. Who wants the man?
Yeah, into January, January meeting, it was brought up for consideration. I just happened to see it today. Apologize, it wasn't on the agenda.
Don't let it happen again. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No questions?
Denise, I apologize for interrupting.
Motion, motion carries.
I believe that concludes my report, Mr.
Madam Mayor, I am sorry for the interruption by Office Manager Willer. Go ahead.
Okay, let me try this again. Good evening, everybody.
I'm sorry.
John, don't let it happen again, as Terry said. Just kidding. So good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of things to report. Public Works did an excellent job plowing our streets with all the snow that we got. I do want to wish Officer Ben Kyler the best of luck. And the third thing is, we conducted some interviews for part-time police officers, which we're still in the process of. Hopefully get some more part-timers in. And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Madam Mayor. I got a few things for you here, folks. First, I have Mr. Vaskis's report. If I can get my phone up. Mrs. Vaskis is expecting, so Hector's excuse for that, obviously. Sorry, I can open my phone. I can't find my text now. All right, we have, for Hector, zoning has nothing new to report. And he would like to report that the sewer jet training for the new sewer machine took place on Tuesday, February second. So everyone in Public Works was trained and they are now able to use that machine safely. Mr. Vaskis also asked for a motion to approve the purchase order for the cabin chassis for the utility truck, the bucket truck. In the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. That was ordered last year and approved last year. But was held up by COVID. It is a Ford and. The Ford factory where our parts were being produced or the vehicles being produced was held for. To manufacture ventilators for COVID-19. So I need that motion to approve the purchase order. For the purchase of the cabin chassis for the utility bucket truck. In the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Miss, you're taking the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Also, we have a personnel vote. We have David Evans. Who has been in the role of acting Public Works supervisor since January of 2020. He filled that role in a temporary. On a temporary basis when Gary Thompson retired. Council met to decide to vote tonight on making Mr. Evans the permanent Public Works supervisor. Mr. Evans brings twenty-six years of experience in Brookhaven Public Works Department. Council's fully satisfied with the job he does. They're fully satisfied with the department's job, the, 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 all the folks that work under Mr. Evans. And with that, I would make, I'm asking for a motion to promote Dave Evans permanently. To the role of Public Works Supervisor. With the salary to meet the demands of the collective bargaining agreement.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What is the date that this is effective? Because we need that for the minutes.
That should be effective. I don't see why you would push it down the road. Mr. Wills, you see any reason why we wouldn't make it effective tomorrow, February fourth?
Yeah, made effective immediately. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll call it immediately February third of 2021. So that's the motion. Who wants it?
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And Mr. Vaskis wanted me to pass along his thoughts. Saying that if he were present, he would, he would favor the role. So it's generally unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mr. Evans. I want to thank Public Works for the great job they did with plowing. The Fire Department for their role. The Police Department and everyone else involved. Then Harry for his role helping out up here at.
Good job.
Also want to remind everyone that the fourth and final round of banners. Application period is open until March the fifth, so you have another month to get your banner apps in.
Oh, banner. I thought you said batters.
No, so we're getting banners. I also have to announce an executive session directly following tonight's meeting. This subject is a matter of discussing a certain procedure and additional item that is related to personnel. Order of health-wise, I'd like to, I'm happy to report that a property maintenance issue that we had on Greenwood. Received a lot of complaints about, has self-resolved and the resident was compliant with our request. So that's good. And let's see. If that's all I have. Oh, well, we have some good COVID news, at least for Delaware County. I've been checking the cases every day. We had a recent load today of a hundred and eleven COVID cases. For anyone that follows it, we've been as high as four hundred and fifty in Delaware County since about early November. So for whatever reason, you're seeing about a sixty to seventy-five percent drop in Delaware County, mostly within the last few weeks. Nationally, you're seeing about a thirty-three to forty percent drop, depending on what site you look at. No one has any idea why. Only six percent of the nation's been vaccinated, so that has some part of it. But Brookhaven has slowed, but not at the same rate that the county slowed. We're still looking at eighty-five cases within the last thirty days for a total of four hundred. But Brookhaven has slowed, but not at the same rate that the county slowed. We're still looking at eighty-five cases within the last thirty days for a total of four hundred and sixty-eight COVID cases. We did add one death unfortunately last month. So we're up to ten COVID-19-related deaths in the borough since the beginning of the pandemic. And I think that is all I have. Oh, I need two motions. One motion to approve the January 4th, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve January 25th, twenty twenty-one council workshop meeting minutes.
I'll take the motion.
Leave a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all I have. Thank you, folks. We have Mrs. Spitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee will meet on Thursday, February eighteenth. And I would like to take a moment to thank both Stephanie Donaway and Sean McKenna for devoting their time and valuable input to the committee. Due to their impending work schedules, they both felt the need to resign at this time. In light of that, I would like to make a motion to accept Stephanie Donaway's resignation from the ordinance committee. We need to vote on that?
We do, we do. We're waiting on the motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I also like to make a motion to accept Sean McKenna's resignation from the ordinance committee.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No questions, I would imagine. Motion carries.
Thank you. So I would again like to thank Stephanie and Sean for caring enough to be on the ordinance committee, a committee that's designed to help the borough and its residents. Let's see, technology website news. Mr. Willward and I had a call with Michael Peter, our account representative for General Code, or as we all know, E-code. To discuss codification costs for next year's budget, along with ordinance updates. Mr. Willward is working on getting Mr. Peter some zoning information needed. Mr. Willward, would you like to elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, the zoning ordinance that we have now was changed in two thousand and eighteen. And the old zoning ordinance is still out there. And what we're going to do is make an indication on E-code that the present zoning is incorrect. And there's a tab on the web, webpage that says new laws. And the, excuse me, the message would say, in the old zoning. On the old zoning code that the, see the new laws, see the tab new laws for the two thousand and eighteen code. So basically, then once all the codification is done. The zoning code will be where it's supposed to be, the new one.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Willward. Thank you. Website modifications are in the works for this new ordinance section and will be finished by our workshop meeting this month. I'll also work with the police and Chief Sappely on updating their section on the website. Community news. So there were quite a few questions regarding trash pickup this week. And I just wanted to remind everyone that our schedule will remain intact unless you hear from us via website, social media, or digital sign. If you don't see anything posted regarding a change in trash pickup, please assume that it's business as usual. I had many, many people ask me if we were going to have our trash picked up today. So if you don't hear otherwise, it's going to be on Wednesday. And that's all my report. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Gilbert.
First of all, I want to congratulate Officer Kelso. If you want to hear, he's very sharp and should make us proud. I wish him the best and a safe career with Brookhaven Police. On the flip side, I do want to give best wishes there, well off to Officer Benjamin Kyler. The other thing I wanted to discuss, the police committee did have interviews yesterday. We had some really good candidates, some really strong candidates, really, really should help us out, get them up and running. And they're currently have some solid experience, really hit ground running, we're hoping. And of course, the public works with snow rule. I can't say enough. I, I've never seen so many people get so many compliments. I mean, they did a phenomenal job to the whole town. I mean, there wasn't a single time you couldn't drive in any road. Big roads, small roads, it didn't matter. They did a phenomenal job. And with that, I will send it back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papples.
Thank you, Mr. President. Workplace safety meeting was held in January, good. For, and all departments attended. There really were no safety issues. Probably the only thing that's of importance was Harry is still sanitizing the borough hall. All aspects for the safety of the employees, since it is closed from the public. And there were no employee injuries for that month. My second part is, is that the planning commission has a vacancy. And we're actually looking for someone to take a position there. The individual, the applicant should be able to read the developer planning drawings. They should be able to read and interpret any type of borough construction codes and also the uniform code. Any knowledge of construction would be a positive. Knowledge of the planning process as it goes through the borough would be another plus. Any interest in improving the overall appearance of the borough of Brookhaven would also be a plus. You don't have to be a civil engineer or have an architectural design degree. So anybody's interested, you know, please contact the borough hall. And my third piece is, is that, Mr. Heller, if you plan on getting into that card before it goes on to eBay, let me have first track at it. Okay, nineteen ninety-three was a long time ago.
I think I have a few.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller.
Okay, I have a few things. As Donna stated, the technology committee did meet this month. We are again meeting on February the eleventh. We have a fire committee meeting coming up next Thursday on February the eleventh at six thirty. For the rec board, there's a few things going on with the rec board. So the first thing I want to do is to let everyone know that we have some resignations. So Shari and Rob Waters have officially resigned, so we thank them for their time that they've spent on the rec board. They are going to stay on board for a bit until the rec board is fully staffed. We also have Mike Garvey, who is the vice president on the board. He also has resigned, but is going to stay on board until the board is fully staffed. With that said, we have four new members that I would like to make a motion for council. So the first motion is for a rec board member, and that's going to be for Jason Coleman. Jason Coleman has a lot of experience in our community. He does a lot of coaching for a lot of different sports. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to add Jason Coleman to the rec board as a member.
Can we tell with the term, you need the terms, what years he's being applied for?
Record term is five years, is it not, Mr. Dykes?
I don't know which one he's taking.
They're four-year terms.
They're four-year terms.
Yeah, we're trying to put them all back in to where they belong. We're getting, we'll be getting the note to, to, to John and Natalie. Should be coming from Lynn hopefully this week.
All right, what we can do is we can, we can make the motion with the, with the exact term pending. And we can, we can mention the term at the next legislative session in March. Sound good, Mr. Wills?
Yeah, ideally, yeah, they should be staggered terms so that each year, municipal year.
Sure.
Yeah, we have a list.
The term would be up and there would be a vacancy so that we don't have multiple.
I agree.
Okay, we can sort that, we can sort that out after the fact and do the motion to appoint Mr. as well.
Lynn, Lynn does have the list of the different dates, and she's putting names into it and getting it to Natalie.
And we can, we can clean it up a little housekeeping at the next legislative meeting. So the motion would be to add Jason Coleman to the Brookhaven Borough Rec Board term pending. Who wants the motion? Mrs. Spitz, motion, who has the second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this.
No, motion carries.
Okay, so this is for a second member. This is going to be for Jim LaPere. Same thing. He's going to be a, a board member with again specified term when we determine that. So I just, that's the motion.
Oh, I heard that.
Who's taking it?
I'll make the motion.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
You guys are slow tonight. Come on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No questions. Welcome back, Jim LaPere. He always did a great job with the rec board. He did a good job as rec board president. And he'll bring a lot back to it. So, welcome back.
Okay, so the third motion is going to be for Charles Allen. He is one of the owners of Bateman's Funeral Home, so we welcome any of our businesses that want to participate in any of our boards. So this is for Charles, Charles Allen, for again unspecified term time at a later date.
I'll make that motion.
Who wants a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So the fourth motion is for a resident whose name is Justin Howell. He's. He also has done a lot of coaching with the baseball, so he has a lot of experience from the athletic aspect of it. So this would be again to make a motion to add Justin Howell as a rec board member for unspecified term time to be determined at a later time.
Who wants the motion?
I'll make it.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Any opposed, I should say?
Mm-hmm.
Carries, thank you.
And I also have one last one for an alternate, and that alternate is Von Donaway. So again, it will be for an alternate position to the rec board for unspecified term to be determined at a later time.
Miss Al Wiki takes. Go ahead.
John, I didn't hear who the person was. She was.
It was, it was Von Donaway.
Von Donaway.
You might know. You might recognize the name.
Yeah, I do recognize the name. Thank you.
I have an Ed McMahon in the audience. All right, who wants the motion?
I do.
Make the motion. I'll second.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Welcome back, Moon.
So to continue on with the rec board, we did meet on the twenty-eighth. There was a few things that were covered. The next event that we would have would be the egg hunt, which we are looking for creative ways to actually have the event in Holdage. So we were talking about kind of doing what we did for the trunk or treat and make it more of a drive-through. And have staggered times for when the kids could come to have prepackaged. We talked about not doing the eggs, but having prepackaged bags of candy and treats for the children with the Easter Bunny there. So as of right now, the Easter Egg Hunt is scheduled for Saturday, April third. The time, I think, on the calendar states eleven AM, but that may change after we kind of put it together and talk with the rec board on how we're going to actually logistically do that. But the thought was to kind of mimic how we did the trunk or treat because that was such a huge success and it was COVID-friendly, if that's possible.
Well, eternal optimists like myself think we'll be generally out of the pandemic by the end of August. Nothing will be vaccinated, the numbers keep going down. We'll hope. I don't see how you do an egg hunt in that same format, but time will.
It wouldn't necessarily be an egg hunt, but it would be at least them be able to get a treat.
All right, well, hopefully we're out of the pandemic, but I have high hopes.
The other thing that we discussed at the rec board, and I know that Mr. Catania is going to be discussing it on his report, was the DCNR grant. We mentioned about possibly doing a multi-purpose facility. Utilizing an existing area that is underutilized right now, so I won't steal his thunder. But the record was very much on board with that multi-purpose facility. The other thing that we talked about was the baseball and softball have started their online registration. There's only going to be online registration for this year. And they're hoping to have a season. It's being pushed back, I think, for both of them till towards closer to the end of April. But online registration, they've extended registration. I believe I know that baseball and softball, I don't think has increased their registration fee, which was very helpful. We also talked about, we had conducted some field inspections. And we had noticed that there were a few infractions on some of the fields. No one knows when those infractions occurred, but they were obviously safety hazards. We had a Mr. Grant submit what those infractions would cost to fix, and it was about a three thousand dollar cost. So we had talked about making sure that anyone that is going to be volunteering or utilizing those fields, that they need to follow the borough ordinances. And nothing should be done on those fields without council knowledge and approval.
From what I understand, from what I understand, that electrical work was done decades ago. No one, no one involved, currently involved, had a hand in it, thankfully. But I think you had things like electrical cords run through conduit and whatnot.
Correct. There was.
I got shocked on the pitcher's mound last year, or the year before. They didn't have it this year. We'll get it fixed.
Correct. So that was, and I know that Mr. Dykes is on, so if I forgot anything, I know that he can obviously fill it in. The only thing else that I have is that the police committee, as well as the part of the contract negotiations. We met on January 5th, January 6th, January 20th, and January 27th to try and hopefully resolve. And get a police contract signed as soon as possible. And that is the end of my report.
All right, let me add that I did reach out to a company that, that builds deck hockey slash basketball courts with a sport court surface. They're waiting on a callback from me. And after I get a quote, I'll get a couple of quotes. I will present some sort of plan. Mr. Gilroy and I will work on it and will submit something to Mr. Catania. I believe you wanted a more robust plan to submit with the grant application, correct, Charles? I'll take that as a yes.
That was a nod with the mute on.
And again, this is all based on, all hinges on getting a grant. Because what I think it's going to cost, we don't have that type of money for it. So cross your fingers and we'll do what we can. All right, thank you, Mrs. Heller. Miss Al Wiki.
Thank you. We do have bills to pay tonight, so I am going to make, I just want to explain what they are for people who are listening to us tonight. The general fund is thirty-three thousand five hundred and one dollars and sixty-seven cents. The trash is six hundred dollars. The sewer is sixty-four thousand seventy-two dollars and thirteen cents. And there is also the Delkor bill, which I talked about at the prior meeting, seven hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. We're actually paying for two thousand twenty. And when you receive your tax bill from the borough. The amount that's on your sewer, if you're on a Delkor recipient, that will be what we're collecting this year to be paid next February to Delkor. So I'm going to make a motion that we do approve the bills for February.
Make a motion.
You'll take the second. Janice made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions?
I have a question, actually.
Go ahead, sir.
Janice, I've just looked on here and I'm seeing the Memorial Park camera was placed. What happened to that one? Did anybody know?
The Memorial Park camera was one of those old type, I guess you'd call them hood cameras, that was probably put it in the nineties, and it was barely functional. We, we discussed, for whatever reason, Memorial Park was last, but Mr. LaPere, I believe, former councilman LaPere, and I started a project. To update all the cameras or add, where, where, add cameras in parks where they weren't due to a couple of incidences. And we knew Memorial Park was probably going to be one of the more tricky ones, so we left it for last, but. From what I understand, that is all we have for M2 Technologies to do, that we should all be caught up.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it was, it was barely functional. There's also power supply. There's also power supply issues amongst other things that Mrs. Heller was talking about, but, um, they, uh, they got it fixed.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Yep, yep. Janice, you're done.
That's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Vescus is excused. Mr. Catania?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I have one more thing that I forgot that the rec board, for the rec board. Um, baseball and softball asked council if they'd be willing to purchase the hand sanitizer stands for the kids around the snack bar, bars, so that when the softball season starts, that we would have that available for them. I do not have a cost of what that would be, but I'm feeling that it would only be about probably six altogether. And we do two at each park. So I didn't know, I didn't think that there would be an issue with that. Um, but I was going to work with Harry to get a cost for us to see what, because I know that he's been getting a lot of stuff for the borough. So I wanted to see without getting a quote.
I don't, unless anyone in council's opposed, I don't think anyone would be, but you can speak your piece now. That doesn't require a motion, but, uh, I'm in full support of it, obviously. Anyone else have any concerns about it?
We have an Eagle Scout looking for a project.
There you go.
Um, but I, I've seen them, you've seen the ones look at Lowe's. I mean, they're made out of PVCs and they have a whole foot pedal thing. It can be, you know, a couple of blocks and they're going to be weatherproof too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so maybe looking at that, but it, yeah, absolutely. I think we definitely need to have something.
And they could probably be repurposed when we come out of the pandemic. Let's face it, once the, once the pandemic status is lifted, no one's going to be using the thing. So we can repurpose them for Borough Hall or the shop or lease wherever we want, so.
And we'll go back and not wash our hands now, you know?
No, you know, it'll happen. All right. Mr. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President. My report was submitted for the month. The few things I want to discuss would be, um, under my agenda, I see traffic signal maintenance. So each year, the traffic signal maintenance contractor does an inspection of all the traffic signals and he noted two areas, um, that needed to be repaired in short order. The first one was for to repair a, a faulty conflict monitor at the intersection of Dutton Mill Road and Edgemont Avenue. And the second one was to reset a pedestrian signal at Whitley. And, uh, the cost was, uh, $1,210 for the conflict monitor and about $500 to reset the signal. So I would ask for authorization to, to that work.
Do we have to take a motion?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't, I didn't hear the last half of what you said, Charles. You, you're breaking up on mine.
All right. I apologize. We had, we had two items from the traffic signal maintenance inspection that, that needed immediate attention. And the first one was, it was a faulty conflict monitor.
I heard, I heard, I heard Dutton Mill and Edgemont and I.
And that was, that was $1,210. And then there was a, um, pedestrian signal head at Edgemont and Whitley that needed to be repositioned at about $500 for that.
Okay. Who wants the motion?
Let's send the quote.
I'll take the motion.
Second, anyone?
On top of it.
Anyone want the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
For one thing.
Yeah, that's it.
Janice is muted.
No.
Motion carries.
The other thing on my, on my report was the what you wrote, the what you wrote cover. Um, we were aware that that, that failed over the storm during last year and we put steel plates on it and, uh, we were hoping to use some of that, uh, Mariner East grant money to do it, but that, that doesn't, that didn't pan out neither. So it has been budgeted and I'm going to ask for authorization to, to begin the process to get that project, uh, for bid, ready for bid.
Sure. We have no choice. Who wants the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Who wants the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed?
I'll find you.
Motion carries.
And finally, Councilor Heller had mentioned that, uh, about a DCNR grant and, uh, you, sure, anytime you want, you can take these things as, as the lead. I don't need to mention them, but, uh, there's a grant application for recreation from the state, uh, open right now. That's, I think it closes in April. I think what I suggested was that, uh, after the Parks Committee or the council comes up with a couple of ideas for some grant applications, I would set up a meeting with the, the local regional, uh, DCNR advisor to come to, come to the borough and go over the project with us to kind of give us some pointers as to which would, would score the highs. This is truly competitive, uh, grant program. So we want to try to get as many points as we can. So I'm going to ask her to come out and I, I understand we're going to try to set that up for, for a time that, um, maybe after hours. I don't know if that'll work, but we will ask that question.
I'll start the communication going, uh, tomorrow with the, um, with the company that I contacted. And I'll have Mrs. Heller and Mr. Gilroy join a little, a little committee to get this going. Call them back, get them out for a quote, and then we will get back to you. I'll get it done as soon as possible.
Charles, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So is it that we just have to pick one or can we have, you know, can we have like top three things that we want to do and see which ones they, you know, hot, like score the highest? Or is it just one project that we can put in and keep our fingers crossed?
I, I think for, for the initial meeting with the, with the DCNR rep, I think I would go with any ideas that you have. When you sit down and talk to her. I mean, there's even a possibility of, of combining, like doing a park improvement project that may, may involve two different sites. Um, I think the, the grant max, I believe, is $250,000. So, you know, and keep in mind that there's a 50% match of this product. So every, every dollar they give you, you have to spend that amount. So, but just.
Where are we getting the money from, people? That's 125,000. We'd have to come up with.
No, no, we, we didn't, the match is 250. We didn't say we were going to spend that. We said the match, we said the match was 250.
Two different parts, I mean.
And this, this grant, this, this grant, this grant, um.
Relax a minute, Janice. Go ahead.
You have, you have several years to implement the project. So it's not to see if you come up with the money tomorrow. It's, so.
So this is a, so this grant, we have to submit it by April. So the deadline is by April, correct?
Right. Right. And you'll hear about it in the fall, usually in the fall of this year. And then I believe you have three years to implement the project.
You have three years. So it's a three-year, okay.
Yep.
So if.
You can play for it if needed.
And no one said we're breaking the bank on this. We're, we're just looking to improve quality of life and give something, uh, additional for another couple of additional sports for our, our children to play or kids to play. So that's all.
That's all I have.
You may be raising taxes.
Don't go start with raising taxes nonsense.
Well, you're going to have to if you're going to put that in.
The public doesn't need to hear that nonsense. We're not raising taxes.
Talk about big, big recreational projects.
Thank you, Mom.
Yeah, well, that's my job to do this.
And, and we love you. You do a great job, but we're not, we're not talking about raising taxes here. Don't use those bad words in my name. Um, who's, who's up next? Mr. Leslie, sir?
Mr. Leslie, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, the Ryzen building, that's, uh, completely vacant now. It's empty. They were in there last week. They cleaned out the rest of their, uh, computer equipment.
We have a potential tenant?
Not that I know of yet.
All right.
Uh, 4117 Edgemont Avenue, that sold, the landowner sold that to the two guys that own that place. Or now they're the owners of that place. That's the Beer Barn. Uh, 4401 Edgemont Avenue, I was there last Friday, met with the state. That's the SNS building. That second floor is now going to be rented out, section eight. The state was there the other day for the inspection.
The apartment, the apartment above it?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh.
And did you say the Beer Barn sold?
No. The property owner sold the building to the two guys that own it.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
What is it, Conic down there, I believe? He owns that property. Eight, the people now own the building.
Sold it to the, to the, to their tenants.
Correct.
Great.
Uh, we had a, uh, we didn't have it. Hilltop had a water main break and no one knew about it. They didn't notify myself or the chief or the fire department. We found about it late at night. I emailed the girl at four o'clock in the morning, the next morning. They kind of had an attitude towards me, uh, that they said we were notified. The fire company wasn't notified. I was not notified. So we believe we got that straightened out on notifications of the fire department and myself now. Anytime they shut that water off in that complex, we need to be notified. Uh, I reached out to, uh, 4236 Edgemont Avenue. It's still in the preliminary stages with the attorneys, with the TD Bank and that Morgan, uh, they're going to buy that property and she's going to let the fire company train in there before they tear it down. And, uh, that's the end of my report. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
I have two things from Mr. Leslie. Sir, I have a question. So I noticed that when, since the Ryzen building has been vacant, the parking lot to the right of it, the, um, pedestrian lights or the, the, the parking lights are off, which kind of creates it to be a little bit dark. And I guess this is, could be for Chief LeBlanc too. Who do we need to contact to see if they can leave those lights on? Because it is a safety hazard. Um, is that the, uh, I guess the property owner or?
I could reach out to Bridgette O'Hallahan tomorrow. I could send her an email and ask her about it. She's the property, uh, maintenance girl up there. Uh, and send an email and ask her about those lights.
Only because it's also very close to the bank and I feel that it needs to be a little bit more well lit because I think there's four lights that are out. And I, I understand that they probably did because Ryzen is technically considered closed, but they also have to be mindful that people do park there, um, and that there are some safety concerns there. Um, and the second thing I have is that, um, Lowe's will be doing their corral very soon. Well, probably by the end of this month and they're going to probably reach out to you to come out and check to make sure that they're in compliance so that the trucks can get through. Um, I just wanted to give you that heads up.
Garden corral?
Yeah, that garden corral.
I see.
Okay.
And I'll reach out to Todd and tell him to hit me up when, uh, they're ready for a law inspection up there.
You got it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. I already gave my brief board of health report. The zoning officer is not present tonight. I believe he had his council meeting. That brings us to the second public discussion. Is there anyone for public discussion?
Of course.
Please unmute yourself. Mr. Dykes?
Hi there.
Address.
Tom Dykes, 305 Westbrook Haven Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would like to thank council for, uh, approving our four new members to the rec board. Uh, I've given them a charge that what I would love to see is not only the current programs we have, but for them to come up with some other new programs and new ideas, um, to include things for our pre-teens, our teens, young adults and going through adults. So try and do a little bit more programming for everybody, not just the, the younger children and the seniors. Try and build it all up. And they're already, they were already coming up with ideas on Thursday night. It was great. Did, did, did you hear that, Cherry? You, you and Donna heard them come up with ideas already that night, correct?
Yes, it was very lovely to see.
That, ideas were just flowing. It was really nice to see. Um, the other thing, I think the drive-through, uh, Easter program, I think will be a good one for that. We are looking into some of our, uh, other programs, hopefully getting the summer concerts up again this year. So we're looking at that. Um, and then on a personal note, just for our snow removal, I don't know who at the borough lit the fire under the state, but the state was unbelievable on Brookhaven Road this last storm. They had the center of the road down to, down to McCattam all the whole time. It was crazy. I mean, they were probably at least 10 or 12 passes every day, Monday and Tuesday. Um, it was just cra- I've never seen the state do that much work on Brookhaven Road. So whoever got lit a fire under them, thank you very much. Because that's a big safety issue, as everybody knows. And that's it.
Let me add, Tom, while you're on, um, I'm told that the count or the council, sure. The, uh, rec board term is five years. I thought it was five, so.
Is, I, I, it might be five. I, I thought we were on fours.
Don't doubt me, Dykes. And Mr. Gavin has signed on. Bill, do you have a report, sir?
Yeah, I do. How you doing, Terry?
How are you, buddy?
Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, I just got the, got the links sent over to me. Um, I had, uh, four zoning reviews this month. I just got the, the review for the Brookhaven Storage. Um, I just received that just on, just Monday. Um, I had four, four reviews and all four were approved.
Anything else?
No. Everything's good, man. How's everything with you?
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard again.
Yeah, thank you.
We're used to longer zoning reports over the last 40 years. Uh, is there, is there, is there anyone else for public discussion?
Yes.
If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and address.
Maureen Baile, B-A-I-L, 3512 Wivston Avenue, Brookhaven.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure because I tried Google Meets first and I wasn't registering. So I just wanted to make sure. In January, I had some questions on the field development and the borough was kind enough to share the plan so I could see where the landscaping was going to be. And, um, I noticed there's a dumpster in the buffer zone behind our house. And, um, the way I read the zoning, if I'm reading it correctly, is that buffer zone should only be trees and shrubs. And, um, that dumpster is within the 20 feet that's supposed to be in that section.
Are you talking about the Brookhaven Glen development?
Yes.
Okay.
The one behind Taco Bell and Wendy's.
So you want the dumpster position within compliance, correct?
Correct. Right now, the plans show it in the buffer zone and, um, all the other dumpsters look like they're away from the buffer zone. Like there's two along the residences of Wivston Avenue. The other one is near their dog park and it's out of the 20 feet. Ours is right in the middle, within 20 feet of my neighbor and us.
Okay. We can take care of it for you. We'll reach out tomorrow.
I appreciate that. And who can I speak with if I have any concerns on the field? Um, especially when they get close to us. The reason being is that I understand, um, I was getting a little paranoid when they started digging because they were getting really close. I left a few messages at the borough, but I didn't hear back from anybody. So I finally went over and I talked to the foreman on the job and he was nice. I expressed my concerns to him. When they made the corner, it looks like they made the corner. And I told him this, it looks like you made the corner at 20 feet, but then you cut in as you were going down along the fence. Um, he explained that that pile of dirt is part of what they're making, what they call the berm, where the trees are going to go on top of.
Mm-hmm.
I get, I get that. But if I have any issues while they're doing it, while they're doing it and he's not available, he was very helpful. Um, who do I talk to?